I've learned that you shouldn't go through life with a catcher's mitt on both hands. You need to be able to throw some things back. I've learned that whenever I decide something with an open heart, I usually make the right decision. I've learned that even when I have pains, I don't have to be one. I've learned that every day you should reach out and touch someone. People love a warm hug or just a friendly pat on the back. I've learned that I still have a lot to learn. I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. She died on May 28th, 2014, at the age of eighty-six, and she left a remarkable legacy. So, pleasure allegiance.
Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May we be seated? At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the current agenda.
So moves.
Move by Mr. Manning, second by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Send me.
Move by Ms. Specter.
Second.
Second by Mr. Manning. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our faculty focus. Dr. Ham.
Yes, tonight we have some of our new-to-two teachers here who are joining the Richland Two family, and to introduce them is Nancy Gregory.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All first-year teachers are required by South Carolina law to participate in a program designed to offer encouragement and support during their first year of teaching. An important part of this program is our New-to-Two Summer Institute. Tonight, we have two of our induction teachers, Woody Pascal from Keels and Christine Counts Davis from Bethel-Hambury, to share their experiences from the New-to-Two program. I'm proud to say that Woody and Christine are both Richland Two graduates that have returned to begin their careers in education. In fact, Mr. Price and I were talking, he was Christine's middle school principal, and I happen to be Woody's middle school principal. So, they're going to share their experiences from New-to-Two with you tonight.
The year was 2001 when I first joined the district. There were fewer than ten elementary schools, four middle schools, and only three high schools. I joined as a fourth grader at Rice Creek Elementary School. That year, I made the decision to go to E.L. Wright Middle School because I heard that they took a trip to Disney World. I did go to E.L. Wright Middle School, but I went because of the law program, the Leadership Academy at Wright. When I was in the seventh grade, I made the decision to attend Richland Northeast High School because I had heard that was where all the cute boys were. When the time came, I did end up at Richland, when the time did come, I did end up at Richland Northeast, not for the boys, but because of the Horizons Honors Magnet Program and the Palmetto Center for the Arts Magnet Program for Vocal Performance. Beginning my leadership development in middle school, beginning, being a part of the Teacher Cadet Program in high school, and being pushed to develop myself as a student, prepared the way for my collegiate experience at Winthrop University. By the time I left Winthrop, I had earned a bachelor's degree in early childhood education, an extra certification in elementary education, I received the Mary Mildred Sullivan Award and graduated with honors. Now that I have been able to literally return home, as I'm living with my parents, into Richland Two, I have been able to call my teachers, my colleagues. Having them tell me that they were willing to help me in any way now, just as they did while I was a student, is very comforting. They are still just as willing to help me now, as they were then. Having been a part of the induction program was even better. I got to talk with other new teachers. Together, we were able to plan out our first few days of school. My coach, Kristy McCollum, has lowered my anxiety because she is available for anything at any time. The induction program has also connected me with other professionals who love sharing resources. That has been one of the most helpful parts of being a new teacher in the district, is that everyone loves to share. It is with great pride that I return home to District Two. I know that I will be supported as a teacher now, just as I was as a student then. I have a coach who believes in me as a teacher and as a professional. During my first year, support is so critical, and I definitely feel the support from my Richland Two family. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, my name is Woody Pascal, and I'm the induction physical education teacher at Windsor and Joseph Keels Elementary, and I'm an attender between the two. And first of all, I want to thank everyone for this opportunity to come out and speak tonight. You know, I've always heard about these things, being in Richland Two for eighteen years and now being a teacher here, and this is my first one, so glad to be here. As, as Ms. Gregory said, I went through schools in Blithewood, I went to Bethel-Hambury, then to Blithewood Middle, then graduated from Blithewood High. Also, I had Mr. Price as a principal there. You know, going through schools there, so many of the experiences and teachers I had were a big impact of why I wanted to become a teacher. I graduated from Blithewood in 2010 and decided to go to USC, where I started out as business for my first three semesters. And in the back of my mind, I always knew that teaching was something that interested me and something that I think I would love doing. But I gave the business a shot, you know, I took three semesters of it, and I realized real quickly I could not sit at a desk the rest of my life. And as a physical education teacher, I do none of that, so that's, that's something I really enjoy. But as I graduated in May, started looking for physical education jobs all around the state, and as a first-year teacher, it's very challenging to find a job, it's a lot of people gunning for not a lot of jobs. So, I applied to some different schools throughout the state, and then one day I got a call from Ms. Butler over at Keels, asked me to come in for an interview, and I jumped on it because I know the area, I went, I went through the area, my parents are still here, and I went to USC, so you know, still another year of Gamecock football, so. You know, I went in, I met with Ms. Butler and Ms. Holzendorf, and my coworker at Keels, and I met with them, they made me feel incredibly comfortable, it made me feel like I was right at home upon meeting them for the first time. I knew Ms. Butler, she was the orchestra teacher at Blithewood Middle when I was there, but meeting them the first time, I felt right at home, and I knew it would be a great fit. So, when I was offered the job, I was thrilled to accept it. And upon, upon receiving the job in Richland Two, I thought back to my experiences there, and especially at Blithewood High, where I was really old enough to kind of understand the dynamic of the teacher relationship and the teacher-student relationship. And one thing that just intrigued me and immediately made me very excited to become part of that family was the way the teachers handled themselves and their relationships with not only the students, but the colleagues, you know. I saw a lot of teachers at Blithewood High not only just be coworkers, but be great friends with the people they worked with, you know. The people that were right down the hall from them were also their best friends, where they would, no matter their age, their subject, no matter what, they would put their minds together and all work for a bigger cause. And that was making the school better, making the students, helping the students improve. And seeing that, as everyone collaborated, worked together at all times, was something that made me thrilled to be a part of, Richland Two. Even though, you know, I may not have been at Blithewood where I went, I knew it was, all the morals, all the values throughout the district were the same, and that was something that made me very excited to become a part of it. You know, and honestly, so many of my teachers had such an impact on my life, if I could have the same opportunity to do that to some of the kids I teach, you know, that's, that's something that I want to take full advantage of, and I'm thrilled to be back in Richland Two. And in terms of New-to-Two, it definitely gave me a sense of deja vu, because I walked in on a Monday through Thursday to Blithewood High, where I'd been about six years ago, sat in a classroom from eight to three with my bookbag on, taking notes, spent a lot of time there, and I was right back. As soon as I got a job, I went right back to where I started, so that was definitely a little bit of deja vu. But really, the most, the most encouraging thing for me at New-to-Two was walking into that auditorium on the first day and seeing, you know, I don't even know how many teachers, well over a hundred teachers that were in the same situation as me, that were, whether they had ten years of experience, whether they were induction teachers like me, they were new to Richland Two, and they were going to go through the same things that I was going to be going through. It was very comforting to know that I wasn't going to be in it alone. And I saw friends that I knew from college, teachers that, teachers led workshops for me that I had had in high school, and now they're teaching me as a professional, you know. It's, it's just very unique to get both aspects of a certain school district, like, like me and Christine have had, getting to be a student and a professional in this district. And another thing that was very encouraging to me was, I believe this is the third day we got to meet our, our teacher coaches, and I am very fortunate to have Ms. Kathy O'Quinn as my coach. And if any of you know Ms. O'Quinn, she might be the nicest person I've ever met in the entire world. She made me feel comfortable, she made me feel safe, she made, like, like she said, she took away my anxiety, she was so available, and every time I've contacted her so far, it's just been nothing but helpful advice, positive words, and just a great energy that really helps me feel comfortable and prepared, because you hear all this stuff about your first year teaching, you got all this stuff to go through. And at first, I was worried about it, but after, you know, I talked to Ms. O'Quinn, and really, she just helped me understand that everything's going to be all right. It's, it's a process, but I'm going to get through it, and she's going to be on my side at every step, and that's incredibly encouraging to me as a teacher and a professional. And having someone, you know, a group of people between my administration, my staff, Ms. O'Quinn, having a group of people that not only care about me as a professional, but also as an educator and as a person, is something that is invaluable as a first-year teacher, because everyone I've encountered has been nothing but positive, nothing but helpful, and they've all made me feel very at home, and I'm really, really blessed and proud to be back in Richland Two. Thank you.
Want to thank Woody and Christine for sharing, and then two of their coaches are here tonight, if they would just stand, Belinda Floor and Kathy O'Quinn. Certainly want to recognize them. And one last thing, at your tables, you ought to see two things. You have a publication from Communications and Strategic Partnerships. They created this with relevant information for someone that is new to our community, and everyone in New-to-Two received one of these. And with their leadership, we also welcomed over twenty-two community partners for New-to-Two who offered our teachers a variety of services and support, and one of those was Spring Valley Baptist Church. So, you have a gift from them, they prepared one of these for every teacher new to the district. And so, wanted you to have that, and again, know what a great partnership this has been. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nancy. Any questions or comments on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I just want to thank both of you for coming to speak to us today. As new teachers, I can imagine you might be a little bit nervous, starting out the year and being right in front of the board right away. I remember my first year of teaching, when I was a previous teacher, we lose teachers within the first five years, by the way, the statistics show. So, this program is important, and remember, being in a portable first time, not knowing what to expect or what to do. So, I think the coaching program that we have here and the New-to-Two program is excellent to really transition folks like yourselves, our new teachers, into the classroom. So, thank you for being here today.
Other questions from the board? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is voting on the executive session items. The Chair will entertain a motion on student appeal.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that student number one return to the home school on a strict probation.
Second.
Move by Mr. Manning and second by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you. Next on our agenda is, under Old Business No Action Requested, is an update on Ridgeview High School Facilities and Renovations. Dr. Ham.
Do we need to vote on any executive session?
That was the only one.
Let me make sure we're okay.
Yes, thank you.
What we have now is an update on the Ridgeview High School facilities. Over the course of the last several months, we've talked about priorities there, reported on activities that have taken place so far. So, we're going to summarize sort of the history and the accomplishments at Ridgeview High School, and then provide some information about moving forward. And to do that is Mr. Jack Carter.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to provide you some information. We want to kind of look back in time a little bit and look what we've done in the last few years. So, if you take a look at that first slide, the 2008 bond referendum authorized some work to be done at Ridgeview. That work was completed in 2012. So, the new M-Wing Cafeteria, I won't go through all of those things. A couple of interesting things in there is, we purchased the land where the band and lacrosse practice field is, and the parking lot, the kid referred to as Parking Lot E or Egypt because it's so far from the building. We, we thought we paid a lot for that property, we paid just under a million dollars for six point, about six point three acres. The food line across the street, which is six point nine acres, paid three point one two million dollars. So, our property looked kind of like a bargain at the time, or looks like a bargain now. But you can see what all was done in that particular referendum. Total is thirteen million, four sixty-nine, five fifty-eight. And then in the summer projects, we did eleven different projects this year, primarily out of savings from the work we had done to build the new concession stands, and a little bit of eight percent money that I wedged over to do it. So, the batting cages are completed, except we've got to run some electrical, we've got to get with the school to find exactly what they're going to put in there. The foundations for the storage building is in, softball is done, gym was, was done, both in the auxiliary gym where they wanted some ability to raise and lower goals and add goals, that's been completed. We added some new fencing, added new goalposts, relocated one of the goalposts to one end of the practice field, so they'd have a goalpost on the practice field which they had not had in the past. And I can tell you, today, we are in the process of relocating a, and it's not on this list, relocating a, a former tower off of another campus, painting it to Ridgeview Colors, and putting it on their practice field because they've never had a coaching tower on their practice field. So, we expect to have that done within the next two weeks. And the last thing on that list, it's a little misleading, it's actually completed in December, was the renovations to a classroom so they could add their master hair care program. We also, in this year's 2014 capital projects, had three line items, the tennis courts, the cooling tower, and the parking lot and loading dock resurfacing. So, that's all been completed. The lighting upgrade in the two Kate Labs was done out of eight percent, but it was done out of a line item in my budget to allow me to do electrical work throughout the district during the year. So, if you add those two things up, it's at fourteen-six. So, a fairly significant investment since 2010. Then we'd go back and look at the Ridgeview Top Ten, and we've been working with Brenda, and Brenda's been working on her staff and parents to develop a comprehensive top-ten, a list that the school feels they need. This is the top, top of the list, you can see artificial turf, turf on the competition field is number one, a football stadium is number two, I won't go through all of these because you've seen them before. Media center upgrade, academic lockers, that's actually a reduction of existing lockers and a renovation of the lockers that remain, and then hallway HVAC. So, and this is just a potential way we could go about doing this. We could take a Phase One, for instance, and do artificial turf on the competition field, light a main practice field, that was not listed on their top-ten, but it was listed as one of their priorities, and was already on the radar for the district to light practice fields at each of our schools. We added some upgrades in the auditorium, even though the auditorium is in the longer-range plan because it's a significant addition, about a three-point-two million dollar addition, we think there's some cosmetic work that needs to be done, and we can do that near-term. We would propose taking that money out of capital, but, capital funds for next year, then you see what Phase Two could look like. And then, again, some future items that are larger dollar items that would probably need to be funded through a referendum. Again, this is just a, an update, it's not a request to provide any approval for any funding phases. And I'll be glad to answer any questions, I know Brenda's here.
Questions or comments on the board?
Jack.
Mr. Manning.
Yes, sir.
The, I, I know when I toured out there, and I'm trying to get a chance to talk to you about this ahead of time, I know one of the issues that came up, there's, there's a couple, I think, district portables on the Ridgeview campus.
There is two that are remaining, and they're both being used by district staff. The third one has been removed.
So, we've, we've removed one out of the three that were there?
We've removed one out of the three. IT is using one for their innovation incubator, and the other one is being used by the high school support staff or support team from academics.
And what, what's the plan on, how long are they going to be there, when can we?
We'll move them both as soon as our, our two I-2 is over.
So, we're, that'll be?
Two years.
Two years?
Well, less than two years.
And there's, we can't relocate those programs anywhere else, and we don't have space anywhere else?
We can certainly look at it.
If we can just, just look at, I don't need an answer from you right now, but if we can look at that, we, I don't think we have portables at any other high school, do we?
Yes, sir. Like what high school has portables? In fact, they've got, I think they're up to three or four, I'd have to go back and look. They had one, and we added one or two this year back on that campus. There aren't any at Northeast. There aren't any, now, in Blithewood, they're using them for academic rooms, they're not housing staff there. There's none at Spring Valley. There's actually no room at Spring Valley, we couldn't put a portable there if we wanted to. None at Northeast.
Well, if we can at, at least just consider if there's anywhere else, I mean, if we don't have a choice, and that's what we have to do, then I understand, but if we have an option somewhere, if we could just explore that.
Other questions, thank you, Ms. Manning. Other questions or comments on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Anderson.
I'm a little baffled here that the priorities, because of the air in the hallways is what we continuously get complaints about, but it shows here it's a number ten priority versus stadium lighting, own campus stadium is a second priority, estimated at six-point-five million dollars, whereas a HVAC is estimated at four-point-two million dollars, and it's a number ten, but the stadium is a number two. I would think that if they were having that many concerns about the hallways being so warm, and we just recently, recently received an email from the SIC chairperson that a person passed out because of the hallways, it appears to me that the priorities are a little bit out of order.
Well, Ms. Anderson, this is what I will say, when you look at, we surveyed our parents, and the number-one concern for our parent groups was HVAC in the hallways. When you surveyed the students, their number-one priority was having a stadium. And so, when I had to prioritize, because I would love to have everything, but given the needs of the parents and the needs of my students, I made a decision and went with the needs of the students first. And especially since the cooling tower is doing a phenomenal job with cooling the classrooms, one of the things that we will have to do is just learn to open the doors. And so, because students are being cooled throughout the day, and parents, when they come in, it's for a particular event, not, they're not at school ninety percent of the time during the week, I made the decision to go with the needs of the students.
Well, the reason I brought that up, because it, it sort of disturbs me that you have people from Ridgeview trying to make the board look like we don't care about our students' parents by not taking care of the HVAC. And then when I see this as a number-ten priority, and then we have people running for the school board making such comments that we don't care about the hallways being hot, it's sort of disturbing because we are trying to cater to the needs of you and your students and parents, but I just thought we needed to make the priorities really match the situations that we're dealing with. And I just wanted to make that point, because when I, I read this the other day, it was like, and then when we, particularly after receiving the letter from the SIC chairperson that a parent passed out doing, was it an open house? So, I just wanted the public to know that we are working accordingly to what you guys want and not what the board wants as priorities. Mr. Chair, I thought it was important, did I make that statement?
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, I was going to add that, I'm glad you added it on the end, because we remember as a board, we asked the principal to give us her priority list, and so, I'm glad you put that on, because I certainly would not want to go and reprioritize the principal's priorities, e- even in light of the, the email that, that you referenced. If in fact, we're going to honor the principal role as giving us her best judgment, and then I would like that we would certainly respect that. So, I think you sort of concluded with that, and that's what I was about to say, so thank, thank you very much for that. Other questions or comments on the board?
Mr. Chair, I would just like-
Dr. Elsie Johnson.
I would like to say, Dr. Mack, I thank you for making the decision that you made, because, again, it's not about pleasing parents or pleasing teachers, it's about pleasing the students, so I appreciate your priority list, so thank you.
Other questions or comments on the board?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make one comment. I know it's important to please students, parents, the community, but it still bothers me that we can put in artificial turf before we can put in a media center upgrade. That's not coming in until Phase Two. To me, that would be, and this is only a board member, and as a person, to me, that would be one of my top priorities for, and I believe in having a stadium, artificial turf, I want you to have all that, but it just seems like too, we're here to educate the students, it seems like we would have the media center upgrades before we had anything.
Thank you, Ms. Specter. Other questions, comments on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dr. Fleming has had a chance, Dr. Fleming.
Just, just a question, it says Phase One, you, you plan on using the 215 capital improvements, is that eight percent money? How much is our total eight percent money for 215, or 2015?
For, for my part of the budget, roughly five million dollars.
Ms. Manning.
Oh, I, actually, just to stack on to what Mr. Fleming, Dr. Fleming stated, it's good to see that we have some sort of immediate expenditures in here through eight percent and other capital funds to be able to have an immediate impact on some of these priority items on the list.
Other que-
I'm just going to say, this would be part of our submission for 2015, which we normally give to the board sometime in late January, early February, assuming the board approves it or whatever direction we went in, then we would begin-
the board approves it or whatever direction we went in, then we would begin work immediately after. We're actually using some near term money to get a little bit of design for these two projects done, so.
Which two projects? Which two projects?
I'm just doing some very preliminary design work on the media center and auditorium, just so I can get a real frame of references to cost, and if the board approves it, then we can move very quickly, because both the media center and the auditorium, whichever goes first, has to be done during that ten weeks of summer, so that we don't disrupt the students.
Other questions or comments on the board? Jack, I want to go back to, I thought we left the last time that the artificial turf was going to be done, and it wasn't even going to be muddied into the whole conversation of priorities and phases and all of that, because we were getting a good quote from a vendor, and that was just going to be done and not included. So now it looks like it's back in the mud again with all the others.
Well, I am doing the bid, putting the bid package together. I've actually met with the field turf guy on the stadium, and we walked in last week. Until I get the bid in and you approve the money, I'm just leaving it here as a place on. We'll make, if we do what we're talking about doing and doing it early, then we would make an adjustment in the proposal for Phase One and Phase Two. So we're not actually going to approve anything tonight.
I understand, and I'm just trying to be clear on the progress of the status of the AstroTurf from the last conversation we had, that you shared with us, that it was such a great opportunity, that we were going to be moving quickly, quicker than, sooner than later, and that's what I want to be clear about.
I am putting the bid package together now, so that we can get it on the street and get the real number.
And help me also understand, under proposed funding phases, it says total combined investment, one point nine. Help me, tell me what that means.
I'm sorry, which one?
Well, it comes after the top ten, the next one that says-
Page nine.
It's the phasing, your funding phase.
Right. So does that, help me, does that mean one point nine million dollars of fund all of these items in Phase One and Two?
Uh, yes, sir. Phase One is one point zero five, and Phase Two is eight fifteen.
And we're going to be able to get all of these done, Phase One and Phase Two, by when? Because I'm not flipping back and forth, help me out with that as well.
We did the first phase as part of the twenty fifteen budget submission. It would be done the end of the summer in twenty fifteen, and Phase Two would be end of the summer twenty sixteen.
No, I'm asking if you did both of them next year?
Oh.
We're talking about one point nine million dollars to do both of them, and I'm talking about over two years.
Uh, but we do try to have them both done by the end of the summer.
Yeah, that's my question. And so next year, Dr. Fleming asked you a question a moment ago, next few years projected eight percent, you said it was going to be about how much total?
Generally, what I get when we do the submission is I'm told to keep my numbers to five million dollars.
Okay. And so-
Numbers to what now?
Sorry?
You were told to keep your numbers to what?
Keep my total submission request to five million. That's been pretty much-
This would be twenty percent of your eight percent budget?
I got the two million, yes, sir.
Okay. That's a lot.
Well, it's a lot, but we've got, I'm still waiting on the numbers from Dr. Miley and others about how much we're going to have carried over from this year, Dr. Fleming, in terms of how much unspent money, just as we did with Richland Northeast. I'm going to be asking the board to consider doing all of these under Phase One and eliminate Phase Two and stretching that out. I really am, because I don't think that's unreasonable, one point nine million dollars, if we rolled in the five million plus what unspent money we get this year, which I don't know how much that's going to be, but let's say that's another five million dollars. Dr. Fleming, that's ten million dollars. Surely we could spare one point nine to-
Where'd you get the five million?
I'm depending on how much is unspent. I don't know the figure yet. We won't know that figure of unspent revenue until when, Dr. Miley? About when?
No, that's all, I don't agree with you. It's on that.
Right. So we'll know that before we have to submit a twenty fifteen budget, is what I'm saying.
Mr. Chair.
Which is what we did with Richland Northeast School. I remember that quite vividly. That's exactly how we did it. We use eight percent-
Actually, at Northeast, we did a phase, the first phase had board reserve and some capital. Actually, it had the contingency for Northeast. The Phase Two was eight percent of board reserve, Phase Three was-
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, and I totally support doing that, I just want, but when I add this up, Jack, so I see one point nine million, I see, but then we don't have like the media center and the locker rooms, there's not a budget item beside those, and when I add up the one million from Phase One and eight hundred, so you're saying eight hundred and fifty thousand includes the media center upgrade and the lockers? Okay, I'm sorry, I was missed.
The big number there is the artificial surface, that's about five hundred sixty-five, seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Five hundred seventy-five thousand.
And then-
Field lighting is a hundred ninety, so the rest of it was actually just above what we had worked on.
Okay. And then just to piggyback on Ms. Anderson's comment, just to be clear, that the HVAC in the hallways does not present a safety or health issue to our students, as far as we can tell.
No, as the, and speaking to that parent, it was just, you know, I think it was the heat index was a hundred degrees outside, it was humid, the halls were crowded, we had not opened the hall, the doors from the media center and the gym, and all of that to have the fan blowing, so, and with her being asthmatic, it was just, all of the factors came together, and she didn't pass out, we were able just to get her to another cooler part of the building.
That's fine. Yeah, I was just checking in general, not particularly on that one issue, but just in general. So thank you.
Other questions, comments on the board?
Question.
Ms. Anderson.
I'm not quite sure I'm clear on the turf, Jack. You were saying that you were getting it at a really great deal, and if that goes through, then that would free up some extra money? Did I read into that, or is that what you said?
I don't get to spin anything, I just get to ask for it. But what Dr. Miley and I have talked, we believe we will have, and Bob Davis told him, term the wherewithal to fund the turf sooner than twenty fifteen, eight capital improvements, which would then restructure Phase One and Two completely, even if we could easily do it this winter. But that's a different pot of money that would not be capital dollars, that would be more likely general fund dollars or board reserve.
And that's where I was going, Ms. Anderson, with my original question about the AstroTurf piece.
Okay. But if there's going to be extra monies, I'm sort of piggybacking on where Ms. Specter was going with the media center.
You're talking about putting the media center in the first phase?
Yeah, that was the second thing I was asking, I put it-
You will move it up.
I'm going to ask the board to consider that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I have a clear understanding.
Okay, I'll make it work.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments on the board? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the approval policy BD, organization of school board, chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, this is a revision, I believe, of the policy BD, and what we're doing is we are moving the election of the chairman of the board and the officers of the board of trustees to the physical year, basically from July to July. That's what we're trying to do. It's been cumbersome to do it in the first meeting of January every year, for many reasons. A lot of times you have elections, got many people coming on in November, you know, making votes in January. It's just been a little bit cumbersome, and I think it will be more effective, and I think, and I'm going to ask the board to approve that, that the officers will be elected in the last, the changes to be elected the last meeting of July, of June, I'm sorry, to take effect the first meeting of July.
Second.
Heard the motion from Dr. Fleming, and the second by Ms. Anderson, any discussion?
Hearing now, we're ready to vote.
Part two of that motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that the board members currently receive a stipend of eight hundred dollars a month. I move that effective immediately, the board chair receives in addition two hundred dollars a month stipend increase, and because our policy changes, or we just made a policy change, our current officers will remain in their positions until the last meeting of June two thousand and fifteen.
They move out Ms., Dr. Fleming?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
Just, I just want to make sure everybody's clear that the increase is only for the chair, not for any other board members. I think that the board chair, as the district has grown, the number of schools, and the amount of work that is on the shoulders of the board chair, I think this is a critical move. It's a lot of money comes out of our pockets to do the work that we do for the district, and I think that it's critical that we make this move.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we're ready to vote. Ms. Anderson seconded. Moving on to new business, new action requested, report from the summer professional development that involve classified staff. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we often hear about the professional development that we offer for our teachers, but professional development is the key to success for all of our employees, including our classified staff. So we have Georgette Council who's going to report on some of the professional development that went on this summer for classified staff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to share with you just briefly some information on all of the categories of classified staff and the professional development opportunities that they participated in this summer. Just a few, make sure I get this right, a few fast facts that I shared with you last year. This particular category of staff encompasses approximately fifteen hundred of the employees in the district, comprised of several different roles, including office professionals, transportation professionals, food service professionals, helping professionals, and social workers, our custodians, our career development facilitators, nurses, excuse me, and teaching assistants as well. I'm going to speak a little more pronounced, of course, on the office professionals, because I am part of that category, but I'm also going to share with you some activities that were done by some of the other categories as well. First being the Richland County Association of Educational Office Professionals, known as RACOP, we had a professional development day. That was called "We're in the Band," was the topic of that particular professional development. It focused on customer service and teamwork, and the goal was to get a standing ovation, and there were five tenants to do in that, which all go along with customer service and providing those skills, including coming to perform, set the stage, connect with your audience, leave your baggage at the door, and pick each other up. We also had some sessions from some folks at the State Department on retirement planning and so forth, and Dr. Awana Ridgell, which some of you may know, was our keynote speaker, and she talked about kicking the stress habit at that particular event. The National Association of Educational Office Professionals is another conference with which the administrative professionals in the office participated this year. This conference was in Portland, Oregon, and I'm proud to say that Richland Two was able to take a contingent of about forty, well, not Richland Two, Richland County, Richland One and Richland Two together, took about forty-three folks to this particular conference. This is a national conference with speakers from all over the, excuse me, all over the country. We had folks that went to that conference that were elected to national committees. As you've awarded some folks certificates, we also had some national award winners, and our very own Dr. Cappy Stack was the national administrator of the year at that particular conference. She was recognized. Some other summer activities by other categories of staff included the South Carolina Midland Summit, which I know some of you all participated in as well, and had a variety of technology-related conference workshops that folks could participate in. There's also been a Power School Users Conference, which some of our classified folks participated in, which gave them an overview of the functionality and basic navigation of Power School. Also, our food service professionals have had professional development that they participated in, which included getting them up to speed on reimbursable meals, new regulations, human resources-related activities, food and physical safety, and they also had culinary presentations as well. Additional training for classified staff included InfoSnap, which I know you all are familiar with. There was some extensive training that went on with that this summer. We also sent folks to the Military Child Coalition Conference, which brings together some TAs and registrars and military personnel and other educators to discuss ways to support and help our military families that are here in the district. Additionally, our helping professionals also have professional development. This included our nurses, which attended a contingent of different things that they had to do over the summer, including the South Carolina Association of School Nurses Conference. They also attended a conference that was sponsored by LARADAC, and a couple of trainings that were sponsored by DHEC that had to do with mandatory immunizations and infectious disease training, which is something that's obviously very important to us here in the district. And our social workers also attended professional development events, which included the twenty fourteen Center of Excellence to prepare teachers of children of poverty, and Abby Cobb, our very own lead social worker, presented at that particular conference on the McKinney-Vento Act. They also went to some training that was sponsored by USC, the College of Social Work Field Supervisor Training. They did Year Two of the Leader in Me Implementation Training, Triple P Training Workshop, and Home Visit Training as well. All of this training that was done was in keeping with Dr. Hamm's four squares, as you see with our summary. We've had requests for additional opportunities, even on the own time, in some cases, for folks without pay. That goes to our learning square. It's been well received and encouraged by the leadership and staff in the district, which speaks to our character and culture here. Communication and collaboration have increased, and that's our community, internal communication, and it's been a great morale booster for this category of staff, in that they now have lots of joy, and they feel very much valued as the teachers and administrators are here in the district as well. And so we just wanted to come and share some of that with you, and thank you for your support, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments on the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a report on the MAGNUS school program, Phase One. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the MAGNUS programs that we have in Richland School District Two are really some of our important calling cards for the district. We have thousands of students who participate in them, and you as a board asked us to look at MAGNUS programs, and when we looked at our own priorities, knowing how important they are to the success of the school district, we wanted to look at them too. So tonight what we have is a Phase One of Part One report for you. The work that we need to do with MAGNUS is actually very multifaceted, and we're tackling it issue by issue, but we're phasing this part in right now in particular, because making some decisions about changes to particular MAGNUS programs and MAGNUS program additions really needs to get started now to be in the queue for us to start advertising relatively soon for enrollment in MAGNUS programs next school year. So to present this report, we have Nancy Gregory and Jeff Potts. Jeff will be talking about sort of the process we've used and some of the information we found, and Nancy will be here to tell you about our recommendations. And again, this is just Phase One, Part One.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hamm. Richland Two prides itself on offering a wide range of choice options. The district has a long history of recognizing that students have different needs and interests, and that MAGNUS have been one way that we have been able to meet some of those needs and interests for students. During the spring, members of the district administration shared with the board information regarding our MAGNUS programs, and since then, over the last few months, district committee began meeting with principals and lead teachers to review all of our district MAGNUS programs. The district committee focused on the following criteria: overall program quality, the continuity of programs across levels, accessibility of students to those programs, program participation, demand, and capacity, of course, successes and challenges within those individual programs. Based on the committee's review, tonight we share with you the first phase and the MAGNUS recommendations.
Chairman Jackson, members of the board, Dr. Hamm. We have provided information on MAGNUS proposals for you, and we have, for the first slide, natural MAGNUS proposals, a language immersion program, an inquiry middle school program at Summit Parkway Middle Campus, Leadership Academy at Muller Road Middle, and a Forest Lake Elementary Learning Collaborative. In the second slide, we have revisions for your review tonight. So again, we have proposals and also revisions. So in your board package, you have a brief description along with a rationale for each of these. These are broad concepts only at this point. If you concur with this direction, we will develop more complete proposals and bring them back to you on September the twenty-third.
them back to you on September the twenty-third. Know that we have given careful thought to regions, continuity, accessibility, and opportunities for all students. We continue to explore multiple entry points at multiple locations and developing unique opportunities for Richland Two students. Any questions?
Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
Want to say the language immersion program. Everybody knows I'm a huge proponent of foreign language in our schools. I think excellent opportunity to begin that journey. I don't see that as the end-all, but I do see that as an important first step. Also, very excited to see the Forest Lake Learning Collaborative opportunity. I think we lack some options on the south end of the district with some magnets, and so I think this is a good one to help increase that opportunity for us on that side of the district.
Thank you. Other questions, comments from the board? Thank you very much, Ms. Gregory. Next on our agenda is the update on our long-range facility study. Dr. Ham?
We have a long history, actually, of doing long-range facility plans that project out about ten years so we can make sure that we're doing adequate planning for the facility needs of the school district. That study was completed by M.B. Kahn, and to present it is Bill Cram.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us here tonight to talk about the ten-year facility plan. Excuse me. As we typically do, we visited all the schools, talked with all the principals, spent a great deal of time with the staff. I want to recognize David Knight, even though he doesn't want me to. David is heavily invested in this. I think you all know him, and he put an immense amount of hours into developing this report. This is a ten-year overview, projected needs and desires, covering programs, growth, renovations and improvements, as well as new facilities. And assuming I can run technology, wonder of wonders. Big shift in this study for previous years is your projected growth. Based on current population trends, years past, we've seen growth, thousand twelve-hundred students a year. In this study, the average projection for the next ten years is a little over five-hundred students per year. And with that, a little different perspective, here is a chart. The red line at the top is taken from the two thousand seven study. Population growth was exceeding a thousand students a year and accelerating. You can see how much lower it is today. The flip side of this is despite this lower growth, Richland Two still ranks in the top five in the state in growth, both in absolute numbers and percentage. So, you're still one of the fastest-growing districts in the state. You're just not growing as fast as you were. So, this has some pretty significant impact on what this study shows. Previous years, this was a pretty lengthy list of facilities. This year, what's projected over the next ten years is one new elementary school, one new high school, three new child development centers, two Magnet centers, and then the usual array of renovations and upgrades to existing facilities. This chart comes from the two thousand seven study, and you can see it's just littered with new schools. Six new elementary schools, two middle schools, two high schools, four centers. Contrast that with this report. One new elementary school, one new high school. And then continuing the district's tradition, it's interesting, this just follows the Magnet program because we programmed in here two new centers, as well as three child development centers. And you put these two side by side, and it shows quite a contrast in where we were in two thousand seven versus today. This district has made a tremendous investment in facilities. One of the things I'll point out is you've gone from something in the neighborhood of three hundred portables being used for classrooms to less than fifty today. Let me back up for a second because I missed a note here. Excuse me. We included these three child development centers. Those are not mandatory. That is an option for the district, but one of the things, well, one major thing in education is a trend toward pre-K, early childhood development. The other part is there is a lot of movement, a lot of discussion of additional state funding coming to fund the operation of these facilities. In anticipation of that, we put this in the program for your consideration. Going back to this chart, Elementary School Twenty-One has now moved out seven years from where it was previously. High School Six has moved out eight years. Now, you have excess capacity in a lot of the schools based on the investment you've made in facilities, and the one caveat on this, of course, is people need to move to the right areas to fill those schools. But we do have quite a, not a huge amount, but adequate excess capacity to enroll students for a while. In your report that you received, this is a sample page, just to give you a brief overview of what it contains, is typically a picture of the facility, some basic statistics on it, when it was built, capacity, that type of thing. One thing I will point out that the enrollment figures contained in this report are the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen figures. We did not have the new data yet, so you're looking at last year's figures. The program piece is enhancements to the facilities requested by the principals to improve the facility to serve the programs. The two major things that came out of this were numerous requests for collaborative learning spaces and performance-type spaces. Bottom left is growth. There were minimal growth issues identified, just a handful of schools, and that's reflective of a couple of things. Again, the major investment the district has made over the past fifteen years. Second part of this is you have maxed out your ability to build on a number of campuses. I mean, we have just filled those campuses to the max. There is no place left to go. So, that's going to be a consideration in the future. The other piece is renovations and replacements. A major difference in this study from years past is the addition of roofs and kitchens in that part of the study. In years past, you've been doing a good job of funding these through eight percent monies, but as we have so many facilities aging now over the next decade, quite frankly, if you tried to do your roofing replacements and kitchen renovations out of your eight percent monies, you would have no other eight percent monies. So, that's something that's been put into this study that's a little bit different. To summarize what's in here, the program request, again, to enhance your existing facilities to better serve the programs that you have now is just a little under fifty million dollars. Growth in your existing schools, very low, less than seven million dollars for growth. Renovations, including the kitchens and roofs I mentioned, about eighty million dollars. And then the new facilities, it's titled New Schools, but that includes two new magnets, three new child development centers, one elementary school, one high school, about two-hundred-and-sixty-five million dollars. Total projected facilities over the next ten years is about four-hundred million dollars. Now, I realize that's a big number, but let me remind you, in two thousand, this district passed a referendum for ninety-eight million dollars. In two thousand and four, a hundred-and-sixty-five million dollars, and in two thousand eight, three-hundred-six million dollars. That totals five-hundred-sixty-nine million dollars in eight years. That investment has well paid off for you in that you're now looking at significantly less than that, even with construction inflation. You're looking at about four-hundred million dollars over the next ten years. So, you've made a great investment in facilities with the slowdown in growth. Now, you've been able to take a breath. There hasn't been a referendum here in six years now, and the needs for the future are less than they have been in the past. With that, we happen to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments from the board? One of the, one of the areas that I asked about was the possibility of a facility for charter, for our charter school, which is currently housed at the Rogers Adult Education Facility. And the board just approved recently a permanent status of now allowing, was it ninth and tenth grade?
That's correct.
Ninth and tenth grade to the existing school. I am concerned that that facility is going to run out of space very, very soon, and without a plan built in with the way that charter school is successfully growing, the Rogers Center will no longer be able to accommodate it. So, I just want to put that on the table and on the record that that needs to be considered somewhere before we are placed in a crisis mode, having approved the addition of ninth and tenth grade. Other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Brill.
I'm also interested in seeing us put Spears Creek Child Development and Clipson Road Child Development into permanent buildings so that those young children will no longer have to be in portables.
That is two of the three facilities that we had up there. That's what we anticipated with those three child development centers. The two of them would be the two that you mentioned, plus one additional one. That was our anticipation.
Other, thank you. Other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Chair. Dr. Fleming.
I think it's important. This ten-year plan is very comprehensive, Bill. I appreciate you and David's work. As I sat down with you that day and went over it with you, and, you know, I said, you know, I looked at that number, it's four-hundred million dollars, but that's a ten-year plan. But you got to have, in order to project five years out, which is what we usually do, you do need this ten-year plan to have that basis to do that. And I think this is something we can work with as a board. I think, you know, I think you guys can really put your heads together on this with the, with the staff. But I think it's a good report. I don't, I don't think it's out, you know, outrageous at all, as it may sound to other people, but if you start taking, putting, building roofs and kitchens with eight percent money, you're not going to have any, you're not going to have any football fields, you're not going to have anything else. I mean, this is not going to happen. You got to repair your leaks, eight percent, all your, all your leaks with eight percent money. So, being in a bond referendum will be the best thing. We got to keep our facilities in the best condition we can do.
Dr. Fleming. Other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
One of the things I missed today, and it came up in the Riju comments and Richland Northeast, I know we had the first home game in twenty-six years at Richland Northeast. I think it was a very successful event. I would like for the board just to consider, I don't know if we need the facilities to be able to have a postseason game at those schools, but maybe the opportunity to provide the facilities to have at least the in-season games at those home facilities.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the back-to-school report. Dr. Ham?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I think we had a very successful back-to-school experience as we were walking around. A lot of places said this is the best opening of school ever. Libby Roof is going to present our back-to-school report.
Thank you, board members, Dr. Ham, and our guests. The back-to-school report for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen will look at the numbers that we're used to seeing in our annual back-to-school report. Numbers like number of students, how we have grown in the number of students, number of employees, and facility and upgrades. And it's going to come to you in a video we're going to watch. But that video is also going to highlight what happens and recognize the employees who help us get ready for that first day of school and then through the hundred-and-seventy-nine days. So, you have a collateral piece to go along with the video so that you have in writing and take with you the numbers, but now we're going to watch a video that gives us a picture of what took place up to that first day and the excitement of that first day. And you all know that this is a blockbuster year in Richland Two. That's our theme, and it's being carried out through lots of activities. Well, when you watch a blockbuster film, blockbuster films usually have a hero. The blockbuster year in Richland Two is made possible not just by one hero, but by thirty-six-hundred heroes, our employees. So, our back-to-school report is also going to, also going to pay tribute to them.
Next on our agenda is the agenda items for the September twenty-third board meeting at Langford Elementary. Dr. Ham?
Yes. First of all, I want to mention that we'll be recognizing our teachers of the year at that meeting. We'll do a student focus and certification of delegates for the South Carolina School Boards Associate, Association Delegate Assembly, and we will have the report on Phase Two of the Magnet programs.
Any other items that the board members would like to add to the September twenty-third agenda or any future agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I'd like for a couple of things. One, I'd like to have us, as a district, sort of look at how we do business with small business, look at how do we categorize small business, medium business, large business, and look at our district policies and how they allow us to work with our small businesses and how we can improve on some of that support for our local community. I'd also like to, at some point, look at a report, get consistent feedback. I know we, as a district, are looking across the board at all of our populations, but I want to make sure in particular that we get some focus throughout the year on our achievement gap, particularly in the area with some of our minority males, which typically lag behind academically, and, and have some focus on those areas for a report to the board.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Brill.
Could we have a discussion of the federal healthy eating guidelines and maybe an update from Mr. Carter?
Other, other requests?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Elka Johnson.
I would like for us to talk about a timeframe for infractions on our SLED reports when it comes to our hiring personnel. And what I mean by that is if a child at the age of sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen
The last thing that I want to mention is, is that the lady who did not pass, I never said she passed out, I said she exacerbated, which means that she had an asthma attack. The reason why I brought that up is because that could have been me, because every 12 hours I have to take an asthma regimen to keep my asthma in check. And if I get too, if I'm in an area that's too humid and it's too hot, I could have been, that could have been me. The reason I brought the attention to the school, back to the school, is because I have a daughter, who's a premature, 101-day premature baby, who also has asthma, who can also have that triggered. So I wanted to raise the issue and the sensitivity and awareness of the fact that this is not the responsibility of a new principal, who's only been a principal for, for a year, but the responsibility is a shared responsibility with our school and this board. The board has a responsibility to make sure that all our students are safe. I have a responsibility as a parent to make sure that I heightened your sensitivity to that, to that fact because of the fact of the incident. I am not trying to make anything public. I am not trying to downplay the board's role. I am just simply trying to, in the words of Ms. Angelo, make me, make you feel good about the things that, that are in need of our schools, Richland, Richland School District, I mean, in Ridgeview. With that said, I will do the best I can to make sure that I address or send emails or make you aware of things in the more, I guess, less, you know, I don't want to say intimidating, but in a less accusatory manner, if that's what you felt, Ms. Anderson, because I didn't think I was accusing anybody of anything, just simply letting you know that we have an issue and we will continue to let you know that we have these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We, thank you, sir. We did, did not receive any other requests in writing, but if there's anyone else in the audience who would like to come and address the board, at this time, you can feel free to do so. Step up, ma'am, if you will, and if you'll state your name and share with us your concern and know that you have three minutes.
Hello, Chair.
Hi.
Rest of the board and Mrs. Hamm, Dr. Hamm as well. My name's Jamie Banks. I have three children in the district. I signed a note outside the door, but I'm not sure why. It didn't get to you. I'm hearing reference to the bullying policy. In, being specific, my son was bullied last year. He's a student at Kelly Mill Middle School. You know, he brought it to my attention that he had been teased by another child. You know, I simply told him just to ignore it, and in February, he was, it actually became physical. My son was pushed and also kicked multiple times by another student. I informed the teacher from the classroom that they shared, which was Social Studies, and I also informed Mr. H. and Mrs. Jacobs. The young man was called to the office. He was talked to, and then he was sent back to class, and that was the only punishment that he received. I don't believe that his parents were even notified. I asked, and I was told that they couldn't tell me if his parents had been notified. Just a few days into this school year, my son told me the same young man was bothering him again, and this time it became physical, just on the 28th, eight days into the school year. My son was slapped in the face and pushed twice. However, unlike last year, he pushed the young man back. And I would like to understand the policy concerning bullying. You know, is it zero tolerance or is it the administration's discretion? I feel like if it was handled differently last year, maybe this wouldn't have happened again this year. You know, I wonder, does it take a child being punched and dragged across the floor, you know, are they still expected not to defend, not to defend themselves? You know, I feel like there's a difference between mutual combat and then defending yourself, and I feel like you have a right, anybody has a right to defend themselves. So I'm just asking that the bullying policy be reevaluated and that if something is started by another student and another student feels like they need to stand up, he stood up, and he was so happy. And I couldn't punish my son for that. He was happy when he got home that he stood up to this young man. But he was suspended, so I also ask, what did it tell the boy that's been bullying him? You know, that when, when my son did respond back, that he's also going to be punished as well. So that's very important to me, not just for my son, but for other kids. You know, we're here for district, too, but I saw something on the news in Lexington, and from what I saw, you know, it looked like one person should have been punished and the other not, and I feel like that was the case with my son. So I'm asking that you guys hopefully put that on the agenda sometime soon and have that changed for future reference.
Thank you. Even though we're not gonna respond to you tonight, I can assure you that Dr. Hamm will look into this immediately, particularly since you referenced the same young man last year and this year, and we'll get a response back to you. Thank you very much.
Chair, she said she signed up, but we didn't have the sign-up list. Can we make sure we get her address and everything so that she...
Yes, Ms. Counselor says she's on it. Gave me a cue already. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, we will entertain board and superintendent comment. We'll start with Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've had some very good reports tonight. Thank you, J. that gave you a report. Mr., I didn't get your name from SIC at Ridgeview.
Davis.
Davis, thank you for your explanation. I appreciate that. And on last Friday, Richland Northeast was a phenomenal, the whole scenery was phenomenal to see that many people come out and enjoy a game, and all of the graduates trying to outnumber their classmates. It was phenomenal. I did not see any fighting, if there were vices, I didn't see or hear of any. People were walking from long, long distances. Ms. Suber, I know you have to be overwhelmed because it was an excellent opportunity for them to get together. I received so many phone calls prior to the game that Northeast has a new stadium, and I was trying to explain that, I don't know where that came from, but at any rate, I think after they got there, they couldn't care less whether it was a new stadium or not. It was the first home game at Northeast. And hopefully, in, in the near future, or I won't say the near because we just look at 10-year facility, and it's a lot of money, but I think that we will be able to one day have a stadium for each school. I know that's not the norm, but that is one of the things that I think we should look forward to doing in our district. I just want to make a point on the 10-year facility plan, and I'm not bragging, but I do take credit for that. Many years ago, we were going for a bond referendum every two to three years. I think, Bill Graham, this was probably before you came aboard with MBCon. But I tried to get the board to, let's do a long-range plan. And back then, I was outnumbered with some males, Bill. I don't know if you or the board did not, but I was outnumbered. And they said, it's literally impossible to plan 10 years ahead. Me, with my stubborn self, was persistent that we could plan 10 years ahead. And one of the things, it was a homeowners association that I went to, and they said the reason our bond referendum failed that year was because they were tired of us going every couple of years for a bond referendum. Look ahead, plan ahead, go for a big bond referendum, and move forward. And I was so proud of the report tonight when you showed the improvements and when we finally hit the bullet and went for the $300 million bond referendum, and now look at us today. So I just want to thank you. I think, I think that that was a good report. I enjoyed meeting with you. There were some things that I wish we could have added into the 10-year facility plan, but some things we just cannot, can't have a cake and eat it, too, so I appreciate that. And Judgeette, your report, I know all of you had a wonderful time. It makes you feel good about your job when you feel included in going to development programs, so I'm just proud that we were all able to afford for all the staff, not just our educational staffing to attend to staff, staff development, but for everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Dr. Fleming.
Is there anything left to say?
You want me to do something to say?
No, I can't. You know, I believe our meeting tonight covered really important issues that we face as a district. I saw two new teachers excited about their new jobs, and these were, these things that just happened, I hate to tell you. These were planned, these new to, and all this support, professional development's been planned for years and years, and we're, we're now seeing the results of the fruit of that. It's so good to see the excited teachers. We approved a policy to make our board more efficient. I mean, chairman's and officer's tenure to the fiscal year. We saw what professional development can do to our classified workers. My goodness, that was great. Makes you feel important when you're recognized, it really does. Report our magnets, I'm glad to see it. We've got some we need to expand, we have some we need to, what'd you call, what was that word you used?
Tweak.
Tweak, whatever, but we do, we got some of that, but we got to look at. Those are important things for a board to do, in my opinion, the long-range facilities plan. Melinda, I don't remember all that about how you've developed that. I mean, but I was always, but I was always for that. I mean, I've always needed that plan.
I'm not gonna call the names, but you were not one of those that was against it.
No, no, no.
I remember exactly who thought me on it, but...
If you don't plan, yeah, if you don't plan, you've planned, you fail. Anyway, but, but it was important, again. And you're right, you saw that they can't really plan 10 years because you saw the old 10-year plan and you saw the others, but at least it gave us ideas of what we need to do, and that's what this, this plan's gonna do for the future. But see, all this affects student achievement. Every bit of what we talked about today affects student achievement, and that's what we're here to do. We're not here to be employment agencies, we're not here to tell the superintendent who to hire and who to fire, we're here to affect student achievement as a board. And if this board ever fails to do that, we're gone, we're lost. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Elka Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Just a few things I'd like to say. First of all, to our new teachers, welcome to Richland, too. We're glad to have you, and we pray and hope that you continue to be a career educator, not someone that's here two or three years, but a career, career educator, because we do need you. Also, to Dr. Mack, I just want to say thank you for your boldness. We do appreciate you being a visionary and someone not afraid to make a change at Ridgeview High School, much needed. I remember enduring the hot halls when I was there six years, so thank you for being a leader in that capacity. Also, to Ms. Suber, thank you so much. I really enjoyed coming out to the game. I enjoyed watching just alumni there, the excitement, and just a lot of joy, as Dr. Hamm would say, so thank you. And I do hope that the board would consider placing a stadium at Richland Northeast as well as Ridgeview, so all of the students can be excited about their school. Also, I want to just make a comment about what that young lady stated when she came up to the mic, and I think that's something that I talked about earlier about us changing the policy. Young lady, I'm just gonna give you an example. Your son got into a fight. If he was 17 years old, he would have been arrested. That would have been on his SLED report. And let's say three months later, he got into another altercation, not his fault, or he got caught with one joint. Do you know that your son would not have had an opportunity 40 years later to come work in Richland School District, too? So I think that's something that we really need to take seriously. Thank you.
Good, Dr. Elka Johnson. Ms. Brill.
There's not much left to say. I do appreciate the very detailed report by Mr. Carter about Ridgeview High School and his diligent work in going in and looking at ways we can find the money and do what we need to do. As we all recall, we did the same thing with Richland Northeast, and Richland Northeast is a school that we're now very proud of. So I'm sure that Ridgeview in time, their facility will match their academic prowess. They do a great job with their kids, and we're extremely proud of all that they're doing, and soon their facility will be just where they want it to be. I'm very interested in the Magnet Programs, the revisions and the proposals. I've always put in my budget requests that we need a way to help every child find their niche, so I'm extremely proud that Richland, too, is moving forward with just doing that. It's absolutely great. And I appreciate the one-on-one work with MBCon and the 10-year facility plan. It's very interesting to see where we were, where we are, and where we're going. And you all do an excellent job of tracking our growth for us. And it's, it's great to know that we don't have to do the bond referendums as soon as we had planned, you know, with the planning that we're doing now. So I think all of this is very positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Ms. Specter.
Really isn't anything to say, other than, Libby, do you have a rewind button? But I just want to say thank you to everyone. Let's go, started off at a great start. And I just appreciate all of you. And I can sit there and rewind, rewind. Okay. I love all these little cheat sheets. These are great. They're really great.
Thank you, Ms. Specter. Ms. Manning.
Mr. Chair, I promise to keep my comments brief, which is not normal, but that blockbuster year, as I've visited many schools throughout the district, I just hear over and over again that folks aren't just happy about the beginning of school, but they're just really excited. They see the potential in the year, parents, students, teachers, staff, and faculty. And of course, as a parent of a student in this district, I got to sit in that carpool line and drop my daughter off the first day, as I know many of you as parents do, and I think that, you know, I felt that excitement as a parent. And I think I'm the, the only parent on the board of a, of a student, and I appreciate that opportunity to experience both sides of my boardmanship and as a parent of a student.
Excuse me, I'm a grandparent.
Yeah.
And so am I.
But, but anyways, very excited about the school year and the opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Dr. Hamm.
I do appreciate the very detailed report by Mr. Carter about Ridgeview High School and his diligent work in going in and looking at ways we can find the money and do what we need to do. As we all recall, we did the same thing with Richland Northeast, and Richland Northeast is a school that we're now very proud of, so I'm sure that Ridgeview in time, their facility will match their academic prowess. They do a great job with their kids, and we're extremely proud of all that they're doing, and soon, their facility will be just where they want it to be. I'm very interested in the Magnet Programs, the revisions and the proposals, I've always put in my budget requests that we need a way to help every child find their niche, so I'm extremely proud that Richland Two is moving forward with just doing that, it's absolutely great. And I appreciate the one-on-one work with MBCon and the ten-year facility plan, it's very interesting to see where we were, where we are, and where we're going, and you all do an excellent job of tracking our growth for us, and it's great to know that we don't have to do the bond referendums as soon as we had planned, you know, with the planning that we're doing now, so I think all of this is very positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Ms. Specter.
Really isn't anything to say, other than, Libby, do you have a rewind button? But I just want to say thank you to everyone, glad school started off at a great start, if you need anything, give us a call, and I just appreciate all of you. And I can sit there and rewind and rewind, okay. I love all these little cheat sheets, these are great, they're really great.
Thank you, Ms. Specter. Ms. Manning.
Mr. Chair, I promise to keep my comments brief, which is not normal, but that blockbuster year, as I've visited many schools throughout the district, I just hear over and over again that folks aren't just happy about the beginning of school, but they're just really excited, they see the potential in the year, parents, students, teachers, staff, and faculty, and of course, as a parent of a student in this district, I got to sit in that carpool line and drop my daughter off the first day, as I know many of you as parents do, and I think that, you know, I felt that excitement as a parent, and I think I'm the only parent on the Board of a student, and I appreciate that opportunity to experience both sides of my Boardmanship and as a parent of a student.
Excuse me, I'm a grandparent.
Yeah.
And so am I.
But anyways, very excited about the school year and the opportunities, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Dr. Hamm.
Well, first of all, and I do have several things to say, but first of all, I want to compliment the folks that put together the Back to School video, it captured, I think, a lot of the spirit of Richland Two. We are really fortunate to come to this work every day and be surrounded by people who are real heroes. This is an amazing group of people, and my hat's off to them, and I really, again, want to express my gratitude for all the hard work that went into having a smooth opening of school and having a blockbuster school year. We're entering the time of year when our district employees are generously involved in two important charities, The United Way and The Walk for Life are about to kick off. Last year, our employees donated more than $140,000 to those two campaigns, and this year, as proud as I was of last year, I'm hoping that we'll do even better. You may have seen some of the videos of the ALS Water Bucket Challenge, or we've been actually calling it the Joy Bucket Challenge, as cold as it was, it was a fun thing to do, and it feels really good to make a contribution to that really important cause, and so, again, thank you to the people who did that, I know that that cold water going over their shoulders will be unforgettable for a long time. If you do social media, I want to mention that you can follow the day in the life of our District Teacher of the Year, Kim Kuhn, tomorrow, and you can follow it on Facebook or Twitter throughout the day, and Kim is a teacher at Bookman Road Elementary School. September is Attendance Awareness Month, and we're stressing the importance of good attendance in our school. If a child misses just two days of school a month, that means that they really will have missed 10% of their school year, so attendance at school is really critical. We don't want our kids to miss the opportunities to learn that we provide. And then last but not least, I want to mention, resident of our community and extend my sympathies to the family, William B. Harley. That name may sound familiar to us, because the South Carolina Association of School Board, excuse me, the South Carolina Association of School Administrators gives awards regularly in honor of Mr. Harley, and I'm proud to say that at least twenty Richland Two administrators have won Harley Awards. He was a wonderful man, he dedicated his life to public education in South Carolina, he was involved in the Chamber of Commerce and Boy Scouts, the Upworth Children's Home, and many other organizations, and he will be deeply missed.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. Disadvantage of going last, but I will be brief, three things very quickly. One, there's no question the Ridgefield School District Two is a dynamic school district, and because we are so dynamic, it creates with it some additional problems and challenges, but this Board is committed to addressing them, and that starts with every conversation that we've had and every discussion we've had tonight, including the challenges for Ridgeview High School. I had the opportunity to meet the young Ms. Counsel Davis at the football game at RNE on last Friday night, and very proud of her and the young man who was here and who spoke with us on tonight. Certainly want to echo what everyone has said regarding Ms. Suber, I sent an email myself to her, letting her know what a great job I thought the entire Ridgefield Two family did in making it a tremendous success on last Friday night, and I'm absolutely convinced, Dr. Mack, that this, I'm proud of the fact that this Board will find the money to do the right thing by Ridgeview, so I have no doubt in my mind about that. If there's no other comments, the Board, Chair willing to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Stand adjourned, thank you very much, have a good night, folks.